Too bad the main thing is now in session. We will forego the Court of Allegiance since we just said it an hour ago. If you aren't here, you can say it to yourself. The Court will please call the vote.
Alden Bouillon. Garriga.
Here.
Halloran.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Here.
Presidente Pedro.
Here.
Corr and present.
Can I have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 15th and October 29th meeting and place them on file? Motion and introduction? Kamal, a second? Dewan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of October 31st and place it on the file? Can I have an introduction? Tiffany, second. Second? Shershaw. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have an introduction and a second to place the committee reports on file? Dewan, second. Irene. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Communications. One is from the Columbia County Planning Board stating they have no objection to the proposed law. That would impose a nine-month moratorium on registration or operation of any new long-term, sorry, short-term lodging facility. The second is from the Columbia County Green Board of Realtors providing comments related to short-term rental regulations. And I'm happy to say they find our law so far, that they approve on the first draft. Third is from WMR Energy Service regarding the presentation of another bid for solar services at a recent Economic Development Committee meeting. May I have an introduction and a second to receive these communications and place them on file? An introduction? Kamal, second. Kelvin. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Resolutions. The ones that we introduced at our informal meeting. First, appointing a commissioner, I mean, sorry, commissioners of deeds. Any further conversation from the council? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution authorizes the fire department to accept applications for membership to individuals 17 years of age and older and to adopt standard operating guidelines for such membership. A roll call vote. Someone elected to discuss this further on the council? A roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The next resolution establishes a capital reserve fund to finance more accessible and functional city offices. Any further discussion? I think since you weren't here last time, Andy, we talked about this. Tiffany was concerned that this fund would be encumbered, but I think, as you told me, if not, we could always pass a resolution to use it for other purposes.
Right.
Can I have a roll, unless there's a discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The next is a resolution authorizing a loan from the general fund to the capital fund for purchase of private loan equipment. And this, of course, will be paid back as the grant disbursements are received. Any questions from the council? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The fifth authorizes the mayor to execute an authorization to proceed with the turnkey streetlight project on the New York Power Authority's energy services program. Any questions from the council? The representative who was here earlier for the finance meeting. Great proposal. It'd save us a lot of money. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The next authorizes the mayor to execute a turnback agreement for EMS services with the county of Columbia. Any questions from the council? A roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Excuse me. A resolution issuing a request for proposals for designing construction oversight services in connection with improvements to be made at the intersection of Fairview Avenue and Green Street. Any questions from the council? A roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
Is Stewart's paying for...?
No.
Oh, well.
I'll argue.
They contribute 200,000.
Yeah.
A resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a state municipal facilities program grant with the New York State Dormitory Authority. Any questions?
Who introduced the second this resolution?
Kelvin and Rob Dujon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with Columbia Green Humane Society to provide dog kennel services for periods of January 1st of 2019 to December 31st of 2019. This is just a renewal of our current arrangement. Any questions?
Same question.
Yes.
Who introduced the second?
Rob and was seconded by Dewan.
Thank you.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a utility purchase agreement with ELP Green Board of Solar. Any further questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Hi. And I'd just like to say thank you all very much for coming through with recommending this conference. This has been a year or two in the making, and now the city of Hudson will be purchasing its energy from its local solar farm. And within, I've been promised even yesterday, but hopefully within this week, you will have electric car charging stations right outside here behind City Hall, meaning that you can now reduce your carbon footprint to almost nothing. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone on this council, for voting. Thank you.
Presidente Pedro. No vote.
Okay. New resolutions. A resolution to support the mayor's recommendation for the appointment of Michael O'Hara by the Board of Supervisors to represent the city of Hudson on the Columbia County Environmental Management Council. Michael already has served on this council, and this is a reappointment. So, I need first an introduction and a second. Irene, Dewan. Can I have a roll call, a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution is for assessing passage due to water and sewer rents to real property tax roll for collection with taxes. Oh, I get, this is to, for those who haven't paid, this is to connect it to their tax Any discussion? An introduction and a second, please?
Do you have to need a property audit?
Yeah. Second?
And this is just to collect what's owed?
Correct. Tiffany, second. A roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Would this, would this be a whole amount that is expected to be collected, or would it be a unit installment since it's...
I think it's just like the taxes.
You can add it to the tax.
Yeah, it's added to the tax, so I can maybe rent this to pay it accordingly, I guess, or, or even, I mean, your...
Installment, same as if it was taxes only, this is just another, another amount that's added to that, and installment agreement would be available. And this amount would be added in the next year? Yeah, it will definitely, it'll show up on, on the annual tax bill, I think. Is it a lot of people?
Youngbloods.
There's a list.
Okay. The next resolution resolves that the city treasurer is authorized to make the following transfers within the fire department accounts to cover shortages for 2019. Any questions from the council? Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Tiffany. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution authorizes transfer funds to the upcoming 2019 obligations. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Irene, second. Rich, roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next resolution authorizes transfer funds within DPW Cemetery and Sewer Department Any questions? Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Kamal and Rich, roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
I need a motion and a second to clear the bills.
Quick question. Is there anything you would add on to the bills and not? Who is Ms. Linda Fennup?
Linda Fennup is the secretary, who's been taking...
Oh, I keep forgetting that.
Any other questions? Can I have an introduction and a second? Rich, second. Kelvin, a roll call vote, please.
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer. Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
Okay. We're going to vote on two of the local laws. The first is our nine-month moratorium on short-term lodging. May I have a motion and a second to enact proposed local law? Sorry, there's no discussion at this point.
All right, which local law are we on?
Sorry. We're on local law number two. There'll be a public hearing.
Mine is outnumbered, so I don't know which one it is.
It's from last level.
I have three local laws in front of me, and only one of them is numbered, it's number seven, the other two are not. So, which one are you referring to?
The moratorium.
It's on back of the agenda. Attached to the agenda. Yeah, that's the list of them. Yeah. So, I'm talking about what I'm trying to do, not what I have that on the list.
Well, typically from their package from last week.
Yep. I'll see this one in August, when I'm at class.
Can I have a motion and a second to enact the local law? John, second? Kamal, a roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
The next law we will be voting on tonight is mending Chapter 112, which shall provide the city with the authority to award purchase contracts and contracts for services subject to competitive bidding on the basis of bidder of best value. This is, just makes the bidding process somewhat simpler for bidding with, is it out of state?
Yeah, what it does is it conforms your procurement policy to state law, and allows you to buy things off of state bid, number one. It's called the piggyback law, where the state goes out and does all of that, you know, open bidding, you can purchase off that bid. It also allows you to score where you're dealing with certain services, and you want to score them for best value, you can do that as well. It's authorized by the general municipal law, you'd be adopting it into your procurement
Can I have an introduction? Rich, and a second, please? Kamal, roll call vote, please?
Alden Garriga.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
And Presidente Pedro.
Okay. The other proposed local laws are laid on the desk for next month. And, that's it. Any new business from the council? I'm sorry. Oh, we have to, introduction and a second? Yeah, which one? Okay.
We're not voting next month, are we?
Yes.
We are.
So, I need, oh, for each one?
Yes.
Can I have an introduction and a second to amend the city charter concerning residency requirements for the city attorney? Introduction, Tiffany, and second, Kamal. Can I have an introduction and a second amending the city charter concerning the term of office for the mayor, common council president, city treasurer?
We table it.
Yeah, I think we tabled this one. Sorry. Skip to the next one. Amend the city charter to designate the majority leader of the common council to preside over meetings in the absence of the common council president. Can I have an introduction and a second? Kelvin and Tiffany.
Going back to the referendum.
Oh, yes.
What's the, has that been amended since the reform?
No. But I think it was going to be, right?
So, there's still, but still alderman for four years? Or no? In with that.
Well...
We had an introduction and a second on that.
I think we should have, I'd like to say more.
What?
We did, actually.
Okay.
We didn't table that.
I thought we did, sorry. No, we did two tables. Okay, then I'll take an introduction and a second.
Can we table it now?
This is just to put it on the table.
Yeah, yeah.
Tiffany, a second?
Oh, wait, third.
Oh, sorry.
But what does the current law send that we're actually voting on? Because, does this include the alderman four years or no?
Yes, it does.
It does. So, that was, okay. I'm just confirming.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right. I'm just confirming, because it didn't specify.
It doesn't pay it here.
Right. No, it's in this part, you're right. So, you got a second and a minute?
We do.
No.
Kamal.
Tiffany and Kamal, a second. Now, we return to new business from the council. And just to, give you one second, just to let the audience know, they want to comment on one of the laws, the laws still need public hearings, which is when you're able to comment on the law. No, 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 we're not, you're not recognized yet, sorry.
Question for the...
No, 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 you, sorry. You're out of order right now. Counsel votes first. Then you'll have a chance.
Roll call, I mean, could you...
Oh, I, definitely, number one. Is there any business from the council?
Just a request.
Sure.
Though some people are happy that we have an intercom system outside City Hall that they can press on for assistance, but people are not unaware of what that button is actually for, because it just says, "Press for assistance." So, some people were confused and thought that that button was for packages, so to speak. So, can we get a sign that indicates what is actually, and who is actually for, so they know as they're going by City Hall, that they can, that the assistance button is for them and not for deliveries?
Deliveries, right.
People think it's for, you know, you might, somebody is delivering a package and say, "We're here. Where do you want it?" And in fact, beside it. People are confused of the button, they don't know that it's there for people who have disabilities, women or fathers with baby strollers, whatever the situation is. We know what it's for, and yes, the paper reported it.
Right.
But mainly our constituent stuff, with some type of signage to indicate what's actually for.
I think you can ask...
I'll make a request in front of the entire...
Sure.
You may make a recommendation on that, that that gets put on the website, that that's there in the purpose of it, so it's on the city website as an accommodation.
Yep.
The thing is, not everybody goes on the website, so... Well, it's still there, right? It's still part of the process.
No, both, both. Any other question, any other new business from the council? Sir, we now rise and ask your question.
Yes, my question is, when will the hearing take place?
On which?
On the terms.
The proposed laws.
Oh, okay. Does this have to go anywhere?
We still have to lay it on the desk, so the council's not going to take it up until next month.
And will the public be allowed to speak before the vote?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Because I was concerned about the Bill of Rights being enforced in the...
The hearing after that as well. Public hearing. Anything else? Yes?
Hey, doing, I'm not sure if this is the right form, but I'm Christopher Philly. I'm the, work for the City Hudson Police Department, also the union president for Local 3979 for the city of Hudson. And just inquiring as to why the council has remained silent after a successful negotiation, tentative agreement between the city on October 25th of 2019, which was then ratified by the union on October 28th, 2019, and there hasn't been anything brought to the table as of tonight. Especially in the October meeting, there was discussions about the contract and wanting to see it. Now that it's signed, I don't know if anybody's actually seen it yet.
They haven't been given the authority to see it.
When you say, when you say the authority, as far as...
We haven't, we've asked to see it, we haven't seen it.
So, you said the attorney that's negotiating for the city hasn't reached out to anybody from the council or from the city at all?
Yeah. That's, what do you mean, reached out? That's, what do you mean, reached out?
To schedule, to meet with the council to maybe present the, present the tentative agreement between the city and the.
Yes, but we still haven't established if we could see the contract before she met with us.
Dominic.
Yes?
Officer Philly. We knew nothing about the contract, we weren't consulted, we weren't asked for any ideas or suggestions, we were just asked to vote on something that we didn't even see or get to discuss. It's not about the money.
You're, and it's not about that, you're, you are given an opportunity to review what has been agreed upon between the city and the union. I just hope that the successful agreement isn't something political between, whether it's the mayor's office or police department. Obviously, there's been some important agendas discussed tonight that were voted on, and this was brought up, it was, it seemed to be a pretty important topic in October, and then for it to remain silent and not even be brought up or even be able to review, review what's been tentatively agreed upon is just, it's very confusing for, for the men and women of the, of the department, so.
It's confusing for us as well. I don't, I don't think for us.
One more time, one more time, Kamal?
Yeah, I don't, we didn't remain silent.
No.
We just never received the information that we requested. And we can't vote on something we never even read, discussed or anything.
Dominic?
Thank you. So what do we need to do, Tom, now to make this, to move this forward? What, what is the next step to bring this to our table?
Well, we need to schedule a, a time for the city's attorney in this matter to meet with us.
Who's "we"?
We, the council.
Council. Okay.
Me.
Okay, so, so that's something that you're gonna do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And who made the request that, and the answer was no, we couldn't see the contract, was that from your office, from the mayor's?
It was from my office, and I would have included you if, you know, but yes, I've made numerous requests to see the contract and have been denied access to the tentative contract. Correct. I don't think it makes any sense either, but that's what I've been told. So I think the real conversation that you might want to have is with the mayor.
Well, my understanding is that the attorney for the city has reached out to the city and they refused to meet, and my understanding also that there was an email put out about not signing this or not even reviewing the agreement till the first of the year, so.
Did that show?
No.
Did that show?
So obviously, I'm coming right to the source to find out if that's.
Well, I think one of your colleagues actually foiled all the information, and you'll find in, in there, nothing to confirm that, the, nothing that says we're waiting to January 1st. I'd be happy to send it directly, I know the foil takes 14 days, but.
I'd like, just, you hear different information and from, and from our understanding is that the attorney has reached out and, and, you know, just trying to understand if, if there's been a miscommunication or if something's actually being, you know, miscommunicated to state that there, nobody was, you know, notifying them, so.
Yes, I am.
Did you speak directly with the attorney for the city?
Yes.
I wondered if, you know, if she maybe wasn't going to be, wasn't gonna give us anything until she'd been fully paid. You'll recall.
No, that's not the issue. We paid her tonight anyway, but that wasn't the issue at all. That was not a question.
What would be the motivation for the attorney not to bring it to us?
She was told not to. What do you mean, bring it to, I'm not sure I understand your question.
No, no, to, to meet, what, I mean, you're saying that you reached out, what would be her motivation not to bring it to the table, to meet with you?
I'm not sure I understand your question. She had no motivation not to meet with us.
So why don't we have the contract? Where is it?
That's the question, why don't we have the contract?
The question is of the mayor.
It's the mayor.
The mayor of the city.
I know, but, you know, we are so late in all of this stuff.
Just talk to the mayor.
Excuse me, I have to fill.
One more time.
And, you know, this does have an itchy feel to it.
What's happening?
That's politics maybe involved.
Well, you may be introducing the politics right now. There's no politics involved.
Right, right. I can't think of any other reason, you know, it doesn't make sense that if the bill is being.
Once again, I'd ask you to ask the mayor.
That's the mayor.
The mayor is pro.
What's happening in this position next year?
I guess, yes, I'm sorry, I, I guess, I'd be confused why the mayor wouldn't forward this because the mayor is part of the negotiating and acted in good faith, so I don't, I'm confused as why he would withhold that information.
So are we.
So are we.
It doesn't make any sense, so, you know, far, far in short of improper practice, I think that would be, you know, on his side, but I just find that hard to believe that that would be the case, especially sitting at the negotiating table having the negotiation. So, like I stated before, I just don't want this to turn into some kind of a political thing with, that interferes with this contract and, and which affects not only the residents because it's taxpayer money that's involved, because if it's drug out longer, then it costs more money to, to.
That was our concern, that was our concern, that we were the stewards of taxpayer money, and we were having no say in anything that was going on in this.
That's the mayor's question, why wasn't the council a part of the contract?
And Tiffany, you're, you know how, you've been in politics for a long time, you know how these contracts work, it's up to the mayor who he chooses to pick, and, and obviously, if you get too many people involved, it becomes very, you know, colluded, and it's just easier with a small amount of people, and same thing on our end, four people, and when I negotiated last contract with Tiffany, it was the, it was the same thing, there was no question of why this person wasn't involved, it was the same, the same people.
Well, our question is just, we want to be involved, that's, that's the only thing on our end.
You, you, you realize that when you get your, you start getting yourself involved with negotiations, that you, you're negotiating good faith so that if something came on the table that maybe somebody else presented and you were involved with and you said, "Nope, I don't want to," then now you're involved with improper practice, so.
Let me say a couple things, Tiffany. Early on in this process, as you'll see in the emails that have been foiled, I reached out to a number of previous administrations to find out how these negotiations took place. And while you cite the last negotiation with Tiffany Hamilton, previous ones were not so limited and did consult council before the, NBEA, before they went into the negotiation. I talked to Mayor Scholera, who told me it was totally different method of how they approached, excuse me, these negotiations. So, the fact that the current mayor chose to do it this way is not necessarily, you know, a matter of long-term precedent. It was his choice to do it this way, and that's fine, but, you know, we reserve the right to be, to at least see the contract before we have a formal presentation from the attorney.
Well, you, you, you get the end result, which is put on the, was put on the table. Obviously, individuals here can't be part of the negotiating because.
No, I understand, I'm sorry, but we haven't seen that end result.
Well, if, if the attorney is trying, from my understanding, if the attorney is trying to reach out and you're not gonna, and saying that we're not gonna meet with you, then that, of course, you're not gonna see the end result.
I think you're not understanding what I'm trying to say. She's reached out to us, we had to, I had to negotiate with the mayor a time when we could actually see the contract before she comes to speak to us about it. He agreed to 24 hours before she arrives. That's the final.
Well, there's a tentative agreement, so if, if you don't like it, then you vote no, that's, that's the process, you vote yes or no.
Right.
And I, I guess I'm now confused because before when I asked, you said nobody, nobody's reached out to you, now you're saying somebody did reach out to you. So you're, I'm confused now.
Okay. At one point, the mayor asked me, when am I, when are we gonna schedule a meeting with the attorney? I wrote back to the mayor, when can we see the contract, the tentative contract? He said, "When the attorney comes to explain it to you." I wrote back, when do we get to see the contract before that meeting? I said, I'm sorry, do I get to see, do we get to see the contract before that meeting? He said, "No."
That's correct.
Okay? That's where negotiations broke down.
Well, and it's, but it's no different than all the other, all the other negotiations we have, it's the same way, it's.
It's not the way all the other negotiations of the council occur. We don't get a contract, we get to negotiate, we have to look at contracts as they're being negotiated.
You're not, you're not involved in that process, that, that's a part of the process that, between the agreement with the city, that's why it's very limited to the amount of people that are involved.
Right, I understand.
And there's, and there's a contract that is signed that, anything inside that negotiation cannot be discussed. I'm just, I'm just, you know, I've been.
I'm not talking about the negotiation.
This is my third negotiation for, so I don't know how many city contracts you've been involved with, sir, I'm just letting you know that, the process that I've been told.
I'm not saying we want this, I'm not talking about the negotiation part, I'm talking about seeing a tentative contract. We see them before we act on them. In this case, we were being asked to have a presentation without seeing the contract first. That was the issue. Got it?
Yes, and that is with the attorney, that's the only way that, that's how that works.
What do you mean, that's with the attorney?
That's with the attorney that agreed, that, that was through the negotiations with the mayor, the mayor's aide, and with the chief, those people were all involved, and that's why she was trying to schedule a meeting to meet with the council so that they have the end result of the contract and then they can vote on it, either yes or no.
I guess you have to follow me here, what I'm saying is, you cannot expect us to meet with the attorney and be handed that contract at that meeting and then have to deal with it just then. We need prior time to look over the contract. That's what, that's what the difficult, the sore spot was here, between us and, between me and the mayor.
It's two pieces of paper. I don't know how much reviewing you need to do. And, and our contract is on, is at City Hall. If you need to review the whole contract, what's in it right now, I don't know if you're looking for.
What do you mean, what do you mean the contract here at City Hall?
Our contract's here.
We have not been given access to it.
So you can't access?
I cannot access the tentative contract, that is correct.
The tentative one you can, but the current one you can't.
Oh, yeah, that's been circulated. You mean, the one that's in place right now?
Yes, you can review.
Yeah, of course.
So I, I don't, it's just two pages, it's, I don't understand what's, you know, if, obviously, if you're given a time, if it was, if it was presented right after it was, a tentative agreement was made, I guess why it wasn't handed to you, so you can review it, so you do have time to review it. And go from there, which, it could have been presented tonight for a vote, but it fell short of that, to the point where it wasn't even discussed, so, like I said, that's just looking for information and just don't want to be in the, in the middle of a political issue between personalities, and we just, you know, it was a good negotiation, we just like to see and hopefully see it followed through, that's all.
Great. Thank you.
So how do you, how do you make that happen? Have we made that happen?
Do you think? I will set up a meeting with the attorney.
Okay, can, can, yeah, let's, you know, let's do that, let's, let's move forward with this, you know?
That was always the plan, I don't, like, come on.
We've, we've had special meetings before, so can we call a special meeting for this? I mean, we've had special meetings.
I have a comment, and also to the city attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dominic Maranti, Alderman Maranti of the Fifth Ward, should recuse himself from the vote and maybe possibly the conversation because he is related to officers, and I don't know if that's a conflict of interest here with him being related to officers on the HPD force and him commenting on this contract and even voting.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, so certainly the decision on recusal ultimately is gonna rest with the council person. I can certainly, you know, talk about the specific details of that and the nature of the familial relationships. That in and of itself wouldn't be a de facto recusal, but it would be back, you know, it would be a fact determination that we'd have to look at. So I'm happy to talk to him about it.
And if it is determined that legally I have to recuse myself, I have no problem with that, but that doesn't mean, mean not, you know, to say what's right is right to bring this in front of the council in a fair and timely manner. I mean, I, I still have a constituents that have, that are, that I need to represent. You know, we had a crime spree in our, in my neighborhood, that the, that the cops did a great job. So my constituents have to depend on law enforcement.
And they do.
So I, I have the right to represent them, and if I have to recuse myself, just like I've asked in the past, and I haven't, have to do it.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think you questioned my ethics and I have a little issue with that.
Any questions?
Well, I know, I'm mature on the digital.
Question from the.
Yeah, just a technical question, so if you are presented with the contract of meeting, do you, are you then, do you have to vote on it then?
No.
So if you have a presentation, you just hear, you can hear the presentation, review the documents, and then vote on it at the next meeting?
That's possible.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question from the police negotiating committee? You said two pages, so is that just what has changed from the original contract?
Yes, with the tentative agreement between the City of Hudson and council, the local council 3929, which is the City of Hudson Police Department.
So we could look at the existing contract and then.
I've already sent it to them. I've already sent it to them.
And then, and then take the two pages, what I didn't know was that there was only two pages of changes.
And, and just, as I'm speaking, yes, just, as long as the attorney has the time to present it to you, then I'm sure it's not that day you get to vote, it's, you do have time to look at it and, you know, and, and vote on it, it's just like I stated, just, you know, why it wasn't presented and at least given the opportunity to, you know, be presented to, to the members here.
Okay, can we, you reach out to the attorney so we can set up a special meeting before our December meeting and then we can vote on it?
Sure. Or we could just do it out there and go out and, yeah. It's just a matter of her schedule. Any further questions?
Thank you, counsel, very much.
Thank you. Question to the chair?